Good morning and welcome to our November fifteenth zoning hearing. Today, in lieu of having a pastor, we will be having a moment of silence followed by the pledge. For those of you willing and able, please join me in our moment of silence. May now stand for our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our meeting is now called to order. I'll have to share with you, we've had an upgrade to the room and it looks much more modern, but without the curtains, we can hear things in the audience much more clearly. So just ask that you be mindful of your volume. With that, John will ask you to go ahead and kick us off.
Thank you Chair.
Yes, thank you.
Today's hearing will be conducted with the following process and procedure. Each case will be called in numerical order. We ask that the applicant please stand and raise their hand when their case is called so they can show that they are here. Then after that, we're going to call to see if anyone here is opposed to that specific case. We would also ask that the opposition also please stand and raise their hand so they can be counted for the record. After recognizing both parties, they will both be asked to come forward to be sworn in and all testimony will be presented to the board at the front of the room here. It's important to note that the applicant will go first and then the opposition, if any, will go second. Each side only gets ten minutes to state their case concerns. There's not a rebuttal process and there's not a process to reserve your time. So convey all your information to the board within your allotted ten-minute time period. Additionally, if more than one person wishes to speak on the same case, you may want to coordinate with each other about what you're going to talk about because each side gets ten minutes total. So you don't want to cover the same information twice. After that, the board will start to discuss the case at hand. From the discussion, they may ask one or more speakers to come back to the front for additional comments or questions. And after that, the board will make a decision to either approve, deny, hold, or continue the case that they're hearing. There are six cases on today's printed agenda which have been withdrawn without prejudice and these cases will not be heard today. First case is resounding case Z sixty-nine of two thousand and twenty-two, Beazer Homes, LLC. This case has been withdrawn without prejudice and will not be heard today. Next case is resounding case Z seventy of two thousand and twenty-two, David Ladnick, Musk Ministries. This case was withdrawn without prejudice and will not be heard today. Resounding case Z seventy-five of two thousand and twenty-two, ADP Mars Hill Road LLC. This case has been withdrawn without prejudice and will not be heard today. SLEP five of two thousand and twenty-two, Parallel Towers Three LLC, also known as Parallel Infrastructure LLC. This case has been withdrawn without prejudice and will not be heard today. SLEP thirteen of two thousand and twenty-two, WH Storage LLC. This case has been withdrawn without prejudice and will not be heard today. And finally, SLEP fifteen of two thousand and twenty-two, ADP Mars Hill Road LLC. This case has been withdrawn without prejudice and will not be heard today. Madam Chair and Board, we did get two requests in the last day to withdraw two other cases that are on your agenda to be heard today. First case is resounding case Z seven of two thousand and twenty-two, K O Homes. They are requesting this to be withdrawn without prejudice, Madam Chair and Board.
Give me one moment, please. Okay, Commissioner Burl isn't here. I believe you are handling her cases today, Gallow? Okay, go ahead, please.
John, can we ask how many are here in opposition prior to furthering this discussion?
All those folks who are opposed to this application, please stand up and raise your hands so it can be counted. Madam Chair and Board, there are fourteen people who are opposed to resounding case Z seven.
Okay. Thank you, John. While the applicant is requesting this to be without prejudice, it is my understanding that information was given to the applicant's attorney yesterday, that they were going to withdraw this and no information was given to these homeowners to advise them of that prior to arriving at this meeting. Therefore, I'm willing to allow this to be withdrawn but with prejudice. And so that would be my motion.
Is there a second?
I'm sorry, can we ask how many were here in support? We typically ask...
John, can we ask how many are in support?
All those folks who are in support of resounding case Z seven, please stand up and raise your hand. There's no one here in support, Madam Chair and Board.
Okay, I'll second it for further discussion. Without Commissioner Burl being here, this is an atypical action that will withdraw without or with prejudice and it's very difficult for me to make that decision with the benefit of her feedback.
If I can add, Commissioner Burl texted me, so again, she wasn't aware that this case was going to be withdrawn. She texted me at eight thirty-nine this morning when she learned about it. So this was truly a last-minute move on the applicant's part. Our code is very clear that if, you know, there's a Wednesday cutoff for any changes, we are, you know, way beyond the Wednesday cutoff. This is a last minute, therefore, we can assign with prejudice to it.
Yes, I understand we can do that. I just don't know if that's the best course of action. I would prefer to even just continue it and not hear it than for us to deny it without prejudice, excuse me, deny it with prejudice again. This is not dialogue with those in the audience. This is just to provide an element of due process, not circumventing the consideration for those who are here. We understand where your interests are. Again, for the years that I've been up here, it is a rare occurrence for us to deny an application with prejudice. And again, without having the feedback of that commissioner. For similar circumstance, we've had many applicants submit and make changes after the Wednesday cutoff without us denying the application with prejudice. So I can share with you, I cannot support that today. However, if you do have support from the other commissioners, your motion may still move forward.
Just for clarification, for everyone's understanding, the difference between denial with prejudice and denial without prejudice?
It's actually withdrawal. The motion was for withdrawal.
But withdrawal, sorry.
Yeah, instead of denying the application. It's just the timeframe on when the applicant can come back and file another application, twelve months.
So they have, yes, they can come back and apply within, you know, a twelve, you know, they can come back and apply at any point in time. With prejudice, they would have to wait twelve months before they can apply again.
And just for clarification and coming back, it doesn't necessarily have to be the same development. It can be something different on that property.
Well, yes.
I just wanted to make that clear.
Either way, was it the intent of Commissioner Burl to have it be withdrawn with prejudice? Or is that your intent?
Commissioner Burl did not state that, but the homeowners have been engaged for nine months in this application, trying to work with the applicant in coming to a resolution. In reviewing the information and having conversations yesterday, we thought we had come up with what was going to be a compromise that would meet both sides and hence, we were going to have the hearing today and then a motion was going to be put forth as such. So this is even catching me off guard because I've spent a lot of time over the past few days working with Commissioner Burl, rereading all the community's input, seeing if we could come to an agreement with what was proposed. So according to Mr. Huff, and you can answer this directly, the applicant has lost the contract on the property?
The contract was terminated and I was hoping, the reason for the la, I mean, it was just terminated, I think the termination went out yesterday afternoon. I was hoping to walk in today and find out that it had come back together. I couldn't tell everybody not to show up and then show up and say, oh, we're now going to go forward. So, I mean, I'm caught in a position of not being able to, I certainly, it'd be worse to say, I think we're going to withdraw it and make people not show up and then stand up and say, oh, we changed our mind. So that's the reason for the lateness of it. I'm as disappointed as anybody. I've been working on this case for a long time. And the people that would be hurt, there's a, property's been owned since nineteen forty-seven by two brothers. One of them's deceased, one of them's in an estate. They're the ones that'd be hurt by the withdrawal without prejudice. My client's not moving forward with it, so that's the issue.
I would, just given the, what I've heard from you, what I've heard in general and that it wasn't, it seems like everybody's a little caught off guard here, I think withdrawal without prejudice is amenable considering there is dialogue that's happening. So it means that if there's some other thing that comes to fruition, not this particular development, it sounds like the community is pretty locked in on not having this development, but that there's at least the opportunity to have other conversations. But I'm just curious on the pressure for the with prejudice, that's all.
The with prejudice is because, again, the community has been very engaged. They have been very involved. They showed up today. And as far as not knowing that this has been done before, I have sat on cases on that side of the room where the applicant has done that at the meeting and it has been withdrawn with prejudice. So this is not something that is uncommon for the board to do, especially when there's been this much community engagement for this long of a time process. Now, I would not, again, this is where it's difficult because the applicant no longer has a contract on the property. So I wouldn't be opposed to having the case be heard, but again, we're going to be making a motion on a contract that is no longer in existence.
Correct. I'm not, I'm not in favor of having it be heard or continued, but it's more of withdrawn with prejudice or withdrawn without prejudice. And I think, given, given the circumstances, there was something else you mentioned that I wanted to bring up, but just given the circumstances, it seems it would be in the best interest to withdraw without prejudice because with prejudice is almost a punitive action. And in this case, this isn't where we're, no one's walking away with a new lesson learned because this is new news for him as well. It wasn't intentional. There have been other cases where there's been more evasive things being done that might merit punitive action, but do you see something that should be, a lesson that should be learned in this situation?
Well, essentially, if you look at the parcel, okay, the parcel is not a desirable parcel to be developed. It's got a forty-foot topography drop going from Wade Green to the adjacent subdivision and then from the one end of Wade Green to the other end of the property, it's a twenty-foot drop. It's a challenging parcel. The site plan that was submitted by the applicant did not even include all of staff comments.
We are now going into the substance of the application, which is not appropriate for consent. There is a motion and there is a second and I would just ask that we look at this from a procedural perspective. If we're going to get to the merits of the application, we do need to have a hearing.
Right. No, I was going to add that I think that I don't necessarily want to continue it, but I think that the recommendation, or I would support withdrawing without prejudice, at least to have the applicant to have an opportunity to bring forth another development. So, you know, I can't get into the challenges because that's not what I'm here to decide with this motion. So I think that quite a few people have been caught off guard. I know that the residents have been engaged and we appreciate you being engaged in the process, but there's also engagement on the developer's side, on the attorney's side, on staff's side. So all of those things should be taken into consideration and those are my comments.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any additional discussion?
Well, actually, I'd like to amend my motion after the discussion.
Thank you.
I would like to amend the motion to allow Z seven of two thousand and twenty-two to be withdrawn without prejudice.
Thank you. I second that. Is there any additional discussion? Call the question. The motion passes four zero with Commissioner Burl being absent and just ask that we be mindful of Commissioner Burl as she has had a death in her family.
Okay, next case, Madam Chair and Board. The applicant for resounding case Z fifty, Ram USA Properties LLC, would like to withdraw this case without prejudice.
Commissioner Sheffield?
I make a motion that we withdraw, that Z fifty be withdrawn from the agenda. Withdrawn without prejudice, okay?
Second, is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes four zero. Thank you.
Thank you. There are a number of cases on today's printed agenda which have been continued or held by staff of the planning commission and these cases will not be heard today. First case is resounding case Z fifty-five of two thousand and twenty-two, Kenneth B. Clary. This case was continued by the staff until the February seventh, two thousand and twenty-three planning commission zoning hearing, so Z fifty-five will not be heard today. Resounding case Z fifty-six of two thousand and twenty-two, Ice and Chetty. This case was held until the December sixth, two thousand and twenty-two planning commission zoning hearing, so Z fifty-six will not be heard today. Resounding case Z fifty-eight of two thousand and twenty-two, Pulte Home Company. This case was held by the planning commission until the December sixth, two thousand and twenty-two planning commission zoning hearing, so Z fifty-eight will not be heard today. Resounding case Z sixty of two thousand and twenty-two, Branch Acquisition Company LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the December sixth, two thousand and twenty-two planning commission zoning hearing, so Z sixty will not be heard today. Resounding case Z sixty-one of two thousand and twenty-two, Green Community Development LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the February twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three board of commissioners zoning hearing, so Z sixty-one will not be heard. Resounding case Z sixty-four of two thousand and twenty-two, Alliance Industrial Partners LLC. This case was continued by the board commissioners until the December twentieth, two thousand and twenty-two board of commissioners zoning hearing, so Z sixty-four will not be heard today. Resounding case Z sixty-five of two thousand and twenty-two, Drakeback Investments LLC. This case was held by the planning commission until the December sixth, two thousand and twenty-two planning commission zoning hearing, so Z sixty-five will not be heard today. Resounding case Z sixty-six of two thousand and twenty-two, ADP Terramill LLC. This case was held by the planning commission until the December sixth, two thousand and twenty-two planning commission zoning hearing, so Z sixty-six will not be heard today. Resounding case Z sixty-seven of two thousand and twenty-two, SMB Investments Incorporated. This case was continued by the staff until the December sixth, two thousand and twenty-two planning commission zoning hearing, so Z sixty-seven will not be heard today. Resounding case Z seventy-one of two thousand and twenty-two, Hamilton Homes Holdings LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the December sixth, two thousand and twenty-two planning commission zoning hearing, so Z seventy-one will not be heard today. Resounding case Z seventy-two of two thousand and twenty-two, Brockbit Homes LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the December sixth, two thousand and twenty-two planning commission zoning hearing, so Z seventy-two will not be heard today. Resounding case Z seventy-four of two thousand and twenty-two, Building New Pathways LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the December sixth, two thousand and twenty-two planning commission zoning hearing, so Z seventy-four will not be heard today. Resounding case Z seventy-six of two thousand and twenty-two, Vasco Properties LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the December sixth, two thousand and twenty-two planning commission zoning hearing, so Z seventy-six will not be heard today. LUP twenty-one of two thousand and twenty-two, Roger Alexander. This case was continued by the staff until the December sixth, two thousand and twenty-two planning commission zoning hearing, so LUP twenty-one of two thousand and twenty-two will not be heard today. LUP twenty-three of two thousand and twenty-two, Coiman Haliado, Mazarejos Reyes. This case was continued by staff until the December sixth, two thousand and twenty-two planning commission zoning hearing, so LUP twenty-three will not be heard today. SLEP fourteen of two thousand and twenty-two, ADP Terramill LLC. This case was continued by the staff, or excuse me, this case was held by the planning commission until the December sixth, two thousand and twenty-two planning commission zoning hearing, so SLEP fourteen will not be heard today. Other Business Item Number Forty-eight of two thousand and twenty-two, Alba Glass. This case was continued by the staff until the December twentieth, two thousand and twenty-two board of commissioners zoning hearing, so Other Business Item Number Forty-eight will not be heard today. Other Business Item Number Fifty-six of two thousand and twenty-two, Stein Investment Group. This case was continued by the staff until the December twentieth, two thousand and twenty-two board of commissioners zoning hearing, so Other Business Item Number Fifty-six will not be heard today. Other Business Item Number Fifty-eight of two thousand and twenty-two, Axian U.S. LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the December twentieth, two thousand and twenty-two board of commissioners zoning hearing, so Other Business Item Number Fifty-eight will not be heard today. Madam Chair and Board, there are two cases on your agenda which were scheduled to be heard today and the applicant is asking for these two cases to be continued until your December zoning hearing. First case is resounding case Z fifty-nine, Glenside Mapleton LLC. The applicant is asking this zoning case be continued until your December twentieth zoning hearing, Madam Chair and Board.
Okay. Commissioner Sheffield?
I make a motion to continue Z fifty-nine to the December, what's the date?
Twentieth.
December twentieth board of commissioners hearing.
Second, is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes four zero.
Okay, and next case is SLEP eleven of two thousand and twenty-two, Glenside Mapleton LLC. The applicant is asking this case be continued until your December twentieth, two thousand and twenty-two zoning hearing, Madam Chair and Board.
Commissioner Sheffield?
I make a motion to continue SLEP eleven to the December twentieth board of commissioners hearing.
I'll second. Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes four zero. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to ask that the people in today's audience, if you have a cell phone, please put the volume mute on your cell phone because they do interfere with the broadcasting presentations when they start ringing. Any person wishing to speak before the board of commissioners must file a campaign contribution disclosure statement if they made a campaign contribution of two hundred and fifty dollars or more to a current member of the board of commissioners. Additional information about this is located on the table in the back of the room and I want to remind applicants, opposition, or any interested party that information is due to this board the Wednesday prior to this hearing. Any information submitted after the Wednesday due date may or may not be considered by the board at their discretion. And with that, Madam Chair and Board, I'm ready to start the consent agenda. Cobb County Board of Commissioners zoning hearing consent agenda for November fifteenth of two thousand and twenty-two. First case on consent is resounding case Z seventy-three of two thousand and twenty-two, Realty Corp., Thornton LLC, request a rezoning from R twenty to LI for Light Industrial in Land Lot five eighty-three of the eighteenth district. The property is located on the south side of I twenty, on the north side of Interstate West Parkway, east of Thornton Road. The planning commission recommends approval of Z seventy-three to the LI zoning district subject to the following conditions. Number one, site plan received by the zoning division on September first, two thousand and twenty-two with the district commissioner approving minor modifications. Number two, final elevation to be approved by the district commissioner. Number three, fire department comments and recommendations. Number four, stormwater management division comments and recommendations. Number five, water and sewer division comments and recommendations. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to resounding case Z seventy-three?
No.
Let the record show there's no one opposed. Moving into land use permits on the consent agenda. First case is LUP twenty of two thousand and twenty-two. Chelsa Hurst, request a temporary land use permit for produce sales in Land Lot five thirty-five of the sixteenth district. The property is located on the west side of Missy Drive, north of Shelby Lane. The planning commission recommends approval for twenty-four months, subject to the following conditions. Number one, no sales from this location. Number two, no exterior signs. And number three, Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LUP twenty?
No.
Let the record show there's no one opposed. LUP twenty-two of two thousand and twenty-two, Maria Alejandra Silva Ortega, request a temporary land use permit to allow occupancy of an accessory structure in Land Lots five fifty-five and five ninety-eight of the sixteenth district. The property is located on the north side of Post Oak Trit Road, east of Post Oak Drive. The planning commission recommends approval of LUP twenty-two for twelve months, subject to the following conditions. Number one, for family use only. Number two, for this applicant only. Number three, DTAS garage cannot contain a kitchenette. Applicant can have any two of the following three items, which is a refrigerator, a stove with an oven, and/or a sink, but cannot have all three items. And number four, staff comments and recommendations. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LUP twenty-two?
No.
Let the record show there's no one opposed. And moving into other business items on today's consent agenda. First item is Other Business Item Number sixty-one of two thousand and twenty-two, which is to consider a site plan approval for Ray Ventures Group LLC regarding property located at the southwest intersection of Mulkey Road and Ellipsin Drive in Land Lot eight fifty-eight of the nineteenth district. Staff recommends approval, subject to the following conditions. Number one, site plan and elevation received October twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-two, contained in the Other Business Packet with the district commissioner approving the final site plan and building elevations. Number two, fire department comments contained in the Other Business Packet. And number three, built-in ovens to be electric only. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to Other Business Item Number sixty-one?
No.
Let the record show there's no one opposed. Other Business Item Number sixty-two is to consider a site plan amendment for Popular Springs Partners LLC regarding rezoning application Z one sixty of nineteen ninety-nine for property located on the west side of Popular Springs Road, west of Wright Road in Land Lot two ninety-two of the nineteenth district. Staff recommends approval, subject to the following conditions. Number one, intergovernmental agreement regarding public safety and access, if needed, to be approved prior to the final plat. Number two, site plan contained in the Other Business Packet received October eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two. Number three, fire department comments contained in the Other Business Packet. And number four, all previous stipulations not in conflict with this amendment to remain in effect. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to Other Business Item Number sixty-two?
No.
Let the record show there's no one opposed. Other Business Item Number sixty-three of two thousand and twenty-two is to consider a reduction of minimum public road frontage for Jennifer Fudge from seventy-five feet to twenty-eight feet for track one and from seventy-five feet to eleven feet for track two, as well as other variances for existing accessory structures. The property... The property is located on the south side of Cannon Way in Land Lot 320 of the 20th District. Staff recommends approval, subject to the following conditions. Number one, site plan received October 11th, 2022, that shows the reductions of public road frontage for both lots, as well as other variances for the existing accessory structures. Number two, site plan review comments contained in the other business packet. Number three, Cobb DOT comments contained in the other business packet, with the deletion of the second sentence. Number four, fire department comments contained in the other business packet. And number five, no further subdivision of the property. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number 63?
No.
Let the record show there's no one opposed. And that completes the printed consent agenda, Madam Chair and Board.
Thank you, John. Commissioners, do you have any changes to make to the consent agenda? Commissioner Sheffield.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to add two cases to the consent agenda. And I'll start with Z 49.
I'll go ahead and read that into the record. Res zoning case Z 49 of 2022, Johnny Hastings Integrity Development Group requests a rezoning from R 20 to RA 5 for a townhome community in Land Lots 690 and 691 of the 19th District. The property is located on the west side of Ernest Barrett Parkway, at the terminus of Old Horseshoe Bend Road, north of Macedonia Road. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z 49? Let the record show there's no one opposed.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to add Z 49 to the consent agenda with the following stipulations. To approve zoning requests from R 20 to RA 5, the development shall have 48 townhomes at a density of no more than 3.8 units per acre, to include the letter of agreeable stipulations from Adam J. Rosen dated November 14th, 2022. Hours of construction shall be Monday through Friday from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and on Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and no construction on Sundays. And all of the staff comments and recommendations not otherwise in conflict. And I would just like to also add a comment regarding this application. This property is unique in that there was an eminent domain some years ago that caused a hardship to the owners. And while I understand with the eminent domain process, there is compensation with that. But it doesn't change, the compensation or receiving the compensation does not change the fact that there was still a hardship created for the owners of the property. So I am pleased that we're able to get this project across the finish line. And it is my hope that the owners will be pleased with the asset that the community will provide, the development will provide to the community. And I certainly hope that it has been worth your weight. Thank you.
Great, thank you, I'll second that. Thanks. Is there any further discussion? Call the question. Okay, added to consent. Edit 3-1 with Commissioner Gammel and opposition. John.
Res zoning case Z 68 of 2022, Revival Land Group LLC requests a rezoning from GC to FST for a townhome community in Land Lot 45 of the 18th District. The property is located on the south side of Boeckton Memorial Highway, west of Allen Road. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z 68?
Then we'll hear it.
We'll just hear that one as regular order.
Thank you. John, does that conclude changes to consent?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Commissioners, with that, I move that we approve the consent agenda as revised. Second, any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes 4-0, thank you. For all those who were here with matters pertaining to the consent agenda, you are free to leave at this time unless you desire to hear other cases. John, why don't we just wait a minute or so for people to exit? Thanks. Whenever you're ready, John.
Thank you. Okay, next case we're going to hear is rezoning case Z 38 of 2022. David Pearson Communities Incorporated requests rezoning from R 30 to R 15 LLC for a single-family subdivision in Land Lots 8 and 9 of the 18th District, Land Lots 1251, 1266, 1267, 1268, 1269, 1322, 1323, 1324, and 1325 of the 19th District. The property is located on the east and west sides of Brown Road, north of Stout Parkway. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z 38?
One.
You got one? Okay, let the record show there's one person here opposed. All those who wish to address the board, please come forward and be sworn in.
Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I'm Kevin Moore here on behalf of the applicant in this rezoning application and owner for rezoning. This property is a very large tract. It's a total of 190 acres, just over 190 acres. It's located in fronts on Brown Road at the intersection of Brown Road and Stout Parkway. You can see the property kind of highlighted on your screen now. To give you a better location, it's located adjacent to Stout Park, to the east of Stout Park. So it shares a long property line along its, the property's western boundary with Stout Park. So that kind of gives you an idea of where this property is located. It's also located, its northern boundary is along Sweetwater Creek. So that kind of gives you a concept of where it's located in the context of which it's located. The property is currently zoned R 30, and we're seeking rezoning to the R 20 Open Space Community or OSC category for development of a single-family subdivision. It will be a maximum of 114 homes, which is a maximum of 1.75 units per acre. So it comes in right at the R 20 allowable density under your open space community regulations. In terms of development or zonings in the area, to the north of this property are existing subdivisions that are zoned R 20. Those were zoned R 20 and developed R 20 over a period of time, though in this particular area there's not been new subdivision-type development in quite some time. Fairly sporadic. What we're proposing to do is bring in a traditional, single-family neighborhood that has a full and robust amenity, as well as full and robust passive amenity as part of this project. Turning to the site plan itself, what probably dominates this proposed OSC is simply the amount of open space involved. Of this 190-plus acre tract, just over 125 acres of it will be dedicated and preserved open space. There is a good deal, a vast majority of floodplain, if you're familiar with Sweetwater Creek, that is involved with this property. This property has approximately 65 acres that is outside of the floodplain that's for development of this community. But you will have, in this instance, just over 125 acres, which is a tremendous amount of acreage, that will be set aside as conservation, open space, and dedicated for that purposes. One of the stipulations that we have included, because it's adjacent to Stout Park and because of the presence of Sweetwater Creek, we have included a stipulation that should, in the future, the county want to utilize some portion of this property to add to Stout Park for some reason, utilize it for other conservation or stormwater-type storage purposes. The owner and applicant have agreed to dedicate it for those purposes, should the county want to do that in the future. That's a future decision. Certainly not, doesn't need to be made today. But what we didn't want to do in our discussions with the community, and certainly from an applicant and owner's standpoint, is foreclose that from happening in the future. We wanted to make sure that we were agreeing upfront that should that need arise, and should that want or desire or intent arise on behalf of the county, that it was an open door to allow that to happen and to allow it by dedication, because it could be used in the future for some county-intended purpose that could very much benefit the county as well as the community, should that decision be made. And we just wanted to make sure we didn't foreclose it, since this is such a unique opportunity to have over 125 acres of open space that's going to be conserved, that is a lot of floodplain, and it's adjacent to a significant county asset, that being Stout Park. So all of those factors combined, we believe, provide for an opportunity in the future, should the county so desire, from either a park standpoint or a stormwater standpoint as well. Both could be very much helpful. What you see in terms of the site plan itself, I did mention the full and robust amenity. It is a very large amenity area with a full clubhouse, full pool, as well as amenity pond. Given the amount of open space that's present here, there's also ample and robust nature trails that we'll be able to take advantage. This floodplain is usable floodplain in the sense that it can be very much used for nature trails and hiking and so forth. And there's just so much of it. It will be a true amenity for the community, for this subdivision, and for the future residents. This proposal does meet the OSC guidelines. We've worked very hard on that aspect of it, given that it's such a large piece, to ensure that all buffers are in place. Those buffers that we worked with are adjoining neighbors. We took the time to meet with the adjoining neighbors to work those issues out so that they would be satisfied with the buffers that we have included where we adjoin residences. But primarily, this property simply adjoins the floodplain surrounding Sweetwater Creek and Stout Park. In addition, one of the issues that has come up in the past in this specific area along Sweetwater Creek is it has experienced flooding. Primarily, it would experience the flooding that occurred in 2009. You're familiar with that timeframe and what occurred, as well as other times. It has a large floodplain area, which is there for a reason, to accommodate that. What we're able to do with this proposal is inject stormwater management under the new guidelines, the more restrictive guidelines, which include required runoff reduction, as well as monitored stormwater management and water quality. And again, this particular property is one that primarily is open pasture. That is the property that's being developed. So it's not heavily wooded tract where it's proposed to be developed. It's primarily open pasture. So again, we believe we have a number of places and instances where we are exercising some extreme care as it relates to stormwater management. There, in fact, there's two ponds existing on the property that are being utilized to assist with that, as well as additional locations for stormwater detention, so that we can ensure ourselves that we are doing that. We also have worked very closely with Mr. Carl Carver with Stormwater Management. We reviewed all of his comments and recommendations, all of which are incorporated into our proposal and agreeable as stipulations. We do have a stipulation letter that's dated November 9th, 2022, in which we have included all of the stipulations that you would typically want to see, including identification of the various buffers, how they will be treated with fencing, as well as with planting and buffering and tree protection, as well as for visual screening. In addition, we have included a leasing restriction that no more than 10% of the units can be leased at any one time, which is an important component, especially as requested by the communities that we met with as part of this rezoning process. Again, this particular area, any development that has occurred, has occurred either under R 20, which is adjacent to us to the north once you cross Sweetwater Creek, or it's occurred as R 15 OSC or CS, which is the old conservation subdivision in the area. But primarily, it's R 20 where development or subdivision development has occurred. We believe that this proposal brings a very traditional neighborhood of single-family homes that is very much needed in the overall community and overall area, so that it can continue its growth of supporting families and then supporting that traditional type of neighborhood and subdivision feel for this area, which fits in very, very nicely. I'm here, and I can answer any questions that you may have. Your staff has recommended approval at the R 20 OSC, as well as the planning commission voted to recommend approval of R 20 OSC. Keeping in mind that since the initial application, we have reduced the number of homes and the category from about 138 homes down to 114. So there's been a lot of work that's gone in to bring it to this point, to receive the support of both staff and the planning commission. Thank you again for your consideration.
Thank you. We'll now hear from opposition. You'll have a maximum of 10 minutes to address the application.
Hey, how you doing? Clinton Rice Jr. Actually, I was hoping to see the developer or the owner of the property after all this time.
Sir, excuse me, may you state your name for the record, please?
Yes, Clinton Rice Jr.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, actually, I was hoping to have see the developer or the property owner show up to one of these meetings, as we have been coming down here for pretty much seven, eight months, give or take. Today, I would have been in the Bahamas. I'm here, it's personal, it's not just business. Now, as we discussed, well, as he discussed, the floods back in '09. The floods back in '09. Here is the picture of Brown Road. You can see the road. And then you can see what happened after the water came.
Okay, give us a moment, sir.
Now, that right there, that is not a 500-year flood. It is not. We know there is global warming going on. We know that the weather pattern is definitely changing, and we see it. Now, that's '09. The last storms that just came and hit Georgia a month ago, we just got, we just missed it of being flooded again. If it would have came a little further south, it would have been '09 over again. Sweetwater Creek continues to flood every time it rains, all the time, not some of the time, all the time that water rises. We're not against development. What we're against is saying that, okay, the water has to go somewhere. Now, along Sweetwater Creek, one of the things that was never mentioned at any of these meetings is that there was another subdivision being built on Holloman Road directly up Sweetwater Creek. Nobody's mentioned that. That water guy also has to go somewhere. That was, I believe, it used to be a water park. Matter of fact, it was a water park. So that's another subdivision right there along with Sweetwater Creek. Our thing is, is that, okay, if the subdivisions are going to be built, again, we are not against Our thing is, is that, okay, if the subdivisions are going to be built, again, we are not against what the change that is coming. We're just asking that it's done the correct way. That there are safeguards put in place and we have to be protected. Because there, there are too many stories on the news that the homes are being flooded out with all this development. And basically, the homeowners are left because those other jurisdictions are not helping these folks that homes are being flooded out through the development. And the developers, they pretty much make their money and they move on. Now, concerning the property owner, as he has put cows back on, it's basically about money for him. We know this. With the cattle, he hasn't been paying taxes. He hasn't because, no, with the property, it's a farm. We know that, we know the game. Everybody knows the game with the animal, the livestock on it, and they don't pay. So that being the case, saying that, okay, what has he really been doing for our community? Pretty much nothing. Now, the developer, as he's developing, and he's been developing all over Georgia and Florida, we just want everything to be done right, and that's where we stand. Now, when it comes for the, the property that they're giving up, the only reason they're giving up that property is because they can't build on it, and they know they can't build on it. Now, what I suggested more than once that, okay, if you guys are going to approve it, we wanted the trails. We want those trails, we want everything in writing. We don't want a promise of, oh, down the road that, oh, well, this could be basically aligned with what's going on in Stout Park. Don't want promises. We want it in writing. Ask the developer or the attorney more than once to say, okay, if this is what's going to be done, we want it in writing. On top of that, who's going to pay for it? All of this needs to be in writing and put out there, not a promise of it in writing, on paper. That way, all of the residents know exactly what's going on, and it's something that say, okay, you know what? They're trying to work with us. We don't want to hear promises. We want it in writing. Thank you. I'm done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other residents here to speak in opposition or any speakers in opposition? Okay, with that, Commissioner Sheffield, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. I'll start with Kevin. I've had the opportunity to watch the Planning Commission meeting for this particular case over the last several months. And Mr. Rice's concern has been addressed during those meetings, both by stormwater and also legal, which I'll ask to weigh in. But I know that you've been meeting with the community and you've also met several times with, with Mr. Rice and others. But if you can just share with us how the developer plans to address his concerns, and I'll ask, also ask Carl to come up to address the stormwater concern. There was a photo from, I think, 13 years ago from '09, which Carl, I'll ask you to speak to that, and another photo of just a few years ago with Sweetwater Creek. I know that the development standards as it relates to stormwater management has been updated over the years. So if you can just shed some light on that for us.
Sure. And that's why, you know, I mentioned it in my presentation. If you've been here for, prior to 2009, you know about the flood that occurred through here, and that was a good picture of it, that occurred in areas along Sweetwater Creek. And that's why there's, it's mapped as floodplain along there. From a stormwater management standpoint, this property being developed as R-20 OSC does have some advantages. If it just remains R-30, the difference between R-30 and R-20 from a stormwater management standpoint is minimal. Because of the, you still have the same amount of streets. You still have essentially the same amount of impervious coverage, a maximum of 35% impervious. And it's just a minimal difference from a stormwater management perspective. What is different now is what you referenced, and that is the very much, much more restrictive and heightened stormwater management regulations and controls, one of which I mentioned is the stormwater runoff reduction. Development of this property has to control the storm, stormwater, not to its predeveloped state, but to its natural state. And so, again, what that does is it increases the amount of detention and water quality that you have to provide, and it also increases the amount of runoff reduction that you have to provide, which, again, goes to assist the stormwater management for the area. This developer is very aware of that. Like I said, we have had conversations with Mr. Carver. He has very detailed comments in his Cobb Stormwater comments that we have adopted as part of our stipulation letter. I know that also, you know, the question that was asked, you know, by Mr. Rice about putting it in writing in terms of the trails in the, in the area. All we can do is agree to dedicate it in the future, should the county want it and want to, to put it to some use that would benefit the community. That's a decision the county has to make. County Board of Commissioners has to make separately and independent of anything that we do. We're going to provide those trails, and we're going to provide, you know, fantastic amenity and a fantastic passive amenity that we can do. But we cannot speak for the county, and that's a separate matter of funding. And that has to happen under a different, you know, agenda and a different arrangement that the county undertakes, should it want to. And it can undertake it to do it for stormwater management reasons. You've seen it before where Cobb County Stormwater Management can look at, at areas that can be used to further stormwater management. And this could be used for that. It can be used for passive recreation in conjunction with Stout Park, should the county make that decision in the future. But again, that's a separate decision from zoning. It's something that doesn't play into it. So we've put everything we can in writing to commit to it. I just, we just can't speak for the county. All we can do is agree that it would be dedicated, so the county doesn't have to pay for it or doesn't have to have consideration for it. In the future, it would be dedicated for those purposes. But as to the other questions related to stormwater management, I think Mr. Carver is much better able to speak to those than I can at this point.
Before Carl, call Carl up. Do, do you guys have any questions for Kevin at this point? No? Okay, thanks, Kevin.
Oh, sorry. It's okay. So you just provide some assurance that the trails are already in the package to be included with the development, those that are on this particular applicant's property?
Yes, so the, the, what we've committed to provide is the nature trails for the, you know, the trails for the residents as part of the passive amenity, yes.
You said you can, or is that stipulated already?
I believe it's stipulated as part of the, it is stipulated as part of the package for half those.
I know they were seeking that type of assurance. And then if there was a partnership with the county, I know you're limited in what you can do, but I'm presuming there would still have to be some acknowledgement that this was intended for that use. Is there any way to articulate that? The partnership with the county? Or do you perceive that there needs to be additional discussion with respect to developing the additional open space?
No, it's stipulated in Kevin's letter.
Eleven, number eleven.
Okay, if it's there, you don't have to find it. I'm just asking.
It is there, the written commitment. Madam Chair, the written commitment is there to do that.
Or is any development of that, that would be on the county?
Yes, ma'am. Those are all the questions that I have.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you.
Carl Carver, Cobb County Stormwater.
Good morning, Carl. How are you today? How are you?
I'm good.
Good, 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 good.
My ears are burning.
Your ears are hurting? Oh, sorry about that. Hopefully, it's not us up here, or me, I should say. If you would, just address some of Mr. Rice's concerns as it relates to stormwater management on his property.
I wasn't here at 2009, but, but the best of my knowledge that it was declared a 500-year storm for Sweetwater Creek in 2009, or thereabouts a 500-year storm. So, yes, it floods, and yes, this development has all the floodplain outside of the resident lots. And all the lots are at least 13,000 square feet, which is above, slightly above the minimum for lots to be outside or adjacent to floodplain.
Okay. Also, in reviewing the staff comments and earlier comments made reference to a dam breach study?
Yes.
Behind several lots. Can you confirm if that's still the case? Because I know that there have been...
It, it looks like with this new site plan that some of the lots on the eastern side of the property, I guess, no, the western side of Brown Road, some of the proposed lots are not within the zone of the existing dam. So the, the dam breach study may not be required. It will be better detailed during plan review.
Okay.
And part of my stipulations also is that both existing lakes will have to be inspected and brought up to current code.
Okay. All right. And also, there's concern from Mr. Rice. The overall concern is the stormwater management. So I just want to make clear that, you know, he has a full understanding of the, the new stormwater management, not necessarily policy, but just the new, the way stormwater is, is implemented now on new development.
There, there, there may be some sites or some lots that will not be able to meet the runoff reduction requirement. Those lots will add to the water quality component of stormwater management. Because of the runoff reduction, sometimes it's not achievable when adjacent to floodplains because of vertical elevations of the water. It depends on the elevation, the final elevation of the lot. And with the lakes being upgraded, the, the stormwater management and detention, which is, controls the volume of the runoff, will be improved because all of the impervious areas will try to drain to the lakes.
Okay.
They'll either pipe them or drainage swells to the lakes.
Okay. Do you guys have any questions for Carl?
Just to drive a little bit more clarity, I think, more concretely, what are some of the differences between the standard of stormwater management today versus the standard of stormwater management in the past?
It's, it's really been evolving since 2000. It's changed over a few years. And we're currently, Cobb County is currently going by the, the full guidelines of the state stormwater management manual, which includes calculating the predeveloped runoff based on a fully wooded site, which is far less existing base flow than if you calculated it based on a pastured site. So they have to detain back to that rate of a fully wooded site from, you know, from the developed condition.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Garmble.
Are there any plans, intents, or discussions to make part of this area that is in the green space as a stormwater management area by the county?
Not to my knowledge.
Because I was very concerned about that in the conversation, because if that is the case, then it takes away the purpose and intent of the OSC to give the green space to the community to use. So that's why I was very surprised that that was brought up several times in the presentation. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me, Carl, I just... I need some help, and Commissioner Sheffield, you can help too with respect to the flooding issues. I mean, there are, there are extensive comments with respect to stormwater for this site. And I know back in, what was it, September 2009, they had the 500-year flood. But even just, I think, two or four years prior to that, there was Hurricane Dennis that damaged a number of homes in that same area. And so even though a five-year flood is not as frequent, from my past research of the Sweetwater Creek area, there's just like three or four basins that converge in that area that result in frequent flooding of, of that area. And if you could go back to, there's a map, at least I see in my book, or that you had on the screen that shows the stormwater. And I'm just going to go back to the notes here. Okay, it says residential structures must be located outside the hazard area. And then you mentioned the lot size. How does that pertain to?
Our current, our current code requires a lot to have 12,500 square feet outside the floodplain.
Okay.
And so these are 13,000.
Okay, I'm just going through the comments. I remember seeing this. I know it came before zoning a long time ago, and so I just thought over just going back to that. But it was Mr. Rice's comments that made me revisit just how serious the flooding, that area has experienced, particularly when he showed those pictures, that was that community.
It, it's not only 12,500 square feet, but it's also a height difference based on the flood elevation.
Okay, can you talk more about that, what the height difference is?
The, the 12,500 square feet needs to be at least 18 inches to three feet above flood elevation. So that's why in this OSC, all the floodplain is outside of the lots.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I'm going to just review this again. Yes, Commissioner Richardson.
Okay, kind of to the point earlier, Kevin, I think you might be able to answer this one. Just so that I'm clear, because I'm looking at a bunch of different maps, how much open space is actually usable? Meaning, open space that's not in the floodplain for this site plan? Or is all of the open space in the floodplain?
Not all of the open space is contained within the floodplain. So you've got, I recall, it's, it surrounds seven acres. It's not in, technically, in the floodplain. But keep in mind that we have 125, just over 125 acres of floodplain. So in this situation, it's reversed. Your OSC ordinance requires a minimum of 35% open space for a development. All right, well, this development has, you know, over 70% open space in, in terms of its percentages. So it's a little bit flipped than what we're normally used to seeing.
And what, what's the acreage being developed?
It's about 65.
Okay. All right, so we're just, if you were to not count the floodplain, we're just below that 35%, well, not just below, but below that 35%.
Right, then we would, we would end up with about 35 acres of flood, of floodplain. We'd end up with 35 acres of open space, but instead, to meet the requirements for developing 65 acres. But instead, we're, we're taking this tract, which is, you know, 125 acres worth of open space.
Okay. Thank you. Kevin, I'd like to ask a question. And Commissioner Sheffield, I don't know if, if you've already asked this. Has the applicant submitted a straight R-20 plan for this site? And while I understand that you can, within an R-20 lot size of 20,000 square feet, you can include some floodplain, but you still have to have the buildable portion outside of that. Have you, have you done an R-20 straight plan for the 65 acres that's, that's buildable? And what does the net units come out to?
Sure. Well, this was initially filed as an R-15 open space community application. And so there was an R-15 straight plan that was prepared that had 133 homes, R-15 homes, straight R-15 homes that met all the regulations, met the minimum square footage, and met the minimum outside of the, outside of the floodplain. So has an R-20 plan been done? No, we didn't do a straight R-20 plan because there was no real need since we had 133 straight plan for R-15, because there's not a need to do it. It would be, it's obviously achievable at that point. Which is the point of the straight plan, is simply to say, if this was just R-20, could you get this many homes? And the answer is yes, easily.
So it would, would still be 114 at our, our straight R-20?
Yes, it wouldn't change much at all.
Okay.
Had there been any discussion about, in order to improve the amount of open space available for this community, for the spirit of OSC, had there been conversation about increasing the elevation of additional? the elevation of additional acreage so that it's above the flood level?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
So right now, there's seven acres approximately that are not in the floodplain. Has there been a conversation to increase the elevation of the ground for an additional, let's just throw out a number, 10 acres, to have 17? Even though it's still in the floodplain, but it's...
Right, we're not allowed to fill in the floodplain. So that wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to do that.
Thank you.
Anything else? Any other questions for Kevin? No?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bill, also, Bill Rowling. There was a request from Mr. Rice to have these issues in writing. And I think what he's primarily looking for from the county and perhaps from the development or the developer is that we submit something in writing that would promise, or I guess that would promise that he would be, or his community, would not be adversely impacted by any type of potential flooding. Is that correct, Mr. Rice? If you would approach, thank you.
Hey, yeah, that is 100% correct. Problem is, and you guys have been seeing over the news, there have been subdivisions, homes that have been being flooded.
In other jurisdictions, did you mention?
Yes, in other jurisdictions. They were complaining about the development that was going on because they knew it was going to happen. And those counties, they still allowed it.
Right, but if I can just jump in, we can't control anything that happens.
Right, but now...
Hold on, Mr. Rice, at any other county...
Okay, I understand that. But looking at that, right, we don't want what's happening to these folks to happen to us.
Right.
Now, as we keep talking about the 500-year flood, we know that the rain is, I mean, rain's going to do what it's going to do. And the rain is unbelievable. Here, just right here.
Mr. Rice, we're not going to represent. I just wanted an answer to that question. Thank you so much for the clarification. Thank you. Bill?
Well, the county cannot guarantee that there won't be ultimately some sort of flood damage or some sort of rain event that would impact other properties. And we'll never be able to do that. We can take the mitigation as much as you possibly can through stormwater retention issues, through inspection during when it goes through the actual site plan related to that. And you take as much precautions as you possibly can. All of these properties that are on this particular zoning are above the floodplain. So that's how it would impact the area. And then, as Carver mentioned, it would also then help with the flow afterwards. There's no guarantee. And you can't indemnify any property owners for whatever ultimately got against, so.
Okay, thanks. Pardon? Some additional questions to stormwater. Okay, I just didn't want to interrupt your flow. Okay, yes, I have some additional questions for you.
Carl Carver, Cobb County Stormwater.
Thank you, Carl. I'm looking here in the bullets under comments and recommendations and see a number of them to help address stormwater on-site. And I just need some help perhaps understanding what some of these interventions are. There was something that talked about level spreaders to address possible mitigation of stormwater discharge onto adjacent properties. I'm not aware of what a level spreader is.
A level spreader is sometimes used to, instead of having like stormwater being discharged from a head wall at a single point, it comes out and is spread out so that its sheet flows out into the adjacent property.
Okay, thank you. And then I think I see a bullet that's referring to a pre- and post-test, but it doesn't say that directly.
Pre- and post, I'm sorry.
Yes, give me one second. I'm going to find the bullet again. Says for bullet 13, "Existing on-site and off-site stormwater management ponds and/or lakes shall be modeled hydrologically to establish and maintain the existing base flows as the pre-developed condition for the site runoff." Can you interpret that?
The existing lakes that are on the property, they will have to be modeled based on what they are detaining now to create a base flow. So you just can't take the existing site and say there's X runoff from that site because there's some retention occurring today based on the existing lakes. So those have to be modeled hydrologically to get that attenuation or that retention to establish a correct base flow for the site.
Okay. I know in some cases, we all have a pre- and post-test of stormwater runoff to ensure there's no additional flow coming off the property?
A lot of times, we have a pre- and post-settlement study done.
Okay.
And that's usually when downstream, there is an existing pond or a lake or something to document what the current sediment level is in that lake and post-settlement level. That would be looked at at plan review to see if there's an existing pond or lake shortly downstream.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Carl. Those are all the questions I have. Commissioner Sheffield, whenever you're ready. You can go ahead. Anything else for number one?
Okay. This one has gone on for quite some time. Hold on, let me just write one more thing. This application is one that epitomizes the process of engaging and working alongside the community to address concerns and provide solutions to those concerns. Thank you to the residents, particularly Mr. Rice. You have been following this case from the very beginning. You have been very engaged. You have been very vocal and an advocate for your community. And I appreciate your efforts. I appreciate the phone call that you and I had for about an hour discussing this application about a month or so ago. And I understand that you're not in opposition of the development, that you just want to ensure that everything is done properly. And that is our goal as well. And while I cannot speak to other jurisdictions and their stormwater staff, I can speak to those that are at Cobb County. And they're very capable of ensuring that everything is done properly and correctly and in the best interest of not just the residents, but also the county. So we take a lot of pride in that. I am appreciative for the applicant for working with the community and coming to a meeting of the minds on a suitable development for the community. The subject parcel, I think, as the applicant mentioned, is currently a farm. And in keeping with that theme, the applicant has proposed to build a modern farmhouse community of approximately 114 single-family residents, which will in some respects help to assist our housing shortage crisis. The proposed development provides access to the adjacent Stout Park, which will provide an external amenity that new homeowners desires in their communities. And thank you to the developer and applicant for leaving room for the county to donate that property to the county for that connection to Stout Park. So with that, Madam Chair, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Yes, ma'am.
Make a motion to approve Z-78 with the following stipulations. Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, 38. And make a motion to approve Z-38 with the following stipulations. Delete zoning request R-15 OSC to R-20 OSC zoning category. Include the letter of agreeable stipulations from J. Kevin Moore dated November 14, 2022. Revise stip number five of Kevin Moore's letter dated November 14, 2022 to reflect that the district commissioner to approve elevations. Hours of construction shall be Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and on Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and no construction days on Sunday. In the event that there is a dam breach study, such studies shall be submitted for discussion with the district commissioner. And all staff comments and recommendations not otherwise in conflict. And that concludes my motion.
All right, I'll second it for discussion. Are there any comments? Commissioner Gamble?
Well, I understand the purpose and intent of the open space community. I cannot support this application. As Carl Carver stated, you know, 13,000 is the minimum lot sizes to put next to floodplain and areas that we know that have water issues, stormwater issues. And we're doing the minimum here in an area that we know has flooding issues and water and drainage problems. And also, as it was said, many basins converge upon it. On top of that, just doing simple math, using Kevin's numbers of how many lots he could get with the R-15 that he submitted, an R-20 just by calculations puts us down to 98 homes. And an R-30 would put us down to 65 homes. So I think this is too intense for this area given the stormwater issues that are presented.
And just to address the 13,000, the code is 12,500, not 13,000.
I was just going by what Carl had said on record.
No, that's what Carl said. He said that the 12,500 is the current code. But the acres are actually 13,000 for the development. So there is a 500.
I understand, but I still think that's too small of a margin given the intensity of problems.
I was just correcting the numbers.
Right, I heard Carl say 13. So, sorry, Carl, your ears are burning again. So I picked up him saying 13. So maybe I misunderstood. So, but anyhow, I still think it's too intense for this area given the existing and known stormwater issues that we have.
Okay, thank you.
John?
And just to clarify the motion, the letter from Kevin Moore was the one dated November the 9th. I think you said November the 11th.
It should have been November 14th. No, I said November 14th. He submitted a letter on yesterday. Hold on, I'm sorry. I think the 14th might have been for another...
For Johnny Hastings.
That's what Z-68.
Strike that. That would be to include the letter of agreeable stipulations from J. Kevin Moore dated November 9th. The 14th is another.
Do you have any additional changes?
Yes, also, Robin, and I'll give you a copy of all this. Strike to revise stip number five of Kevin Moore's letter dated November 14, 2022 to reflect that the district commissioner to approve elevations.
Commissioner Sheffield, I'm really torn here because I know the amount of work it takes to zone a strong development. And I have every confidence that you've done that here. And I pulled up a paper I wrote in the spring of 2011. When I graduated from law school, I wrote a lengthy paper regarding stormwater utilities. And I spoke specifically to the area around Sweetwater Mission. And I just, I'm reading parts of it here that, and I'm going to share it here because in my mind, I don't think I can support this seeing what I wrote. It says, "Limiting development in flood-prone areas can also help reduce the burden on stormwater management resources. Persons may not know they live in a flood-prone area or may be reluctant to purchase flood insurance if their community is not designated on a federal flood insurance map. Still, FEMA reports that 25% of claims still come from areas outside of designated flood areas. During 2009, several homes in Austell were outside designated flood zones, yet their properties sustained significant damage. An AJC article reveals that Austell is flood-prone, is a flood-prone area experiencing four significant flood events since 1995. The United States Army Corps of Engineers had also studied flood patterns in Austell five times between 1964 and 1985 and concluded the city is susceptible to flooding. The city sits at a juncture of five creeks and at the bottom of a drainage basin. Moreover, it is surrounded by highly developed areas in Cobb, Paulding, and Cherokee Counties and has an intermodal train site that has altered hydrology in the city. After Hurricane Dennis in 2005, Cobb facilitated the purchase of 16 homes in Austell where flooding was frequent, yet other flood-prone areas in Austell and Cobb communities may warrant similar response to save dollars and also save lives. There were 10 lives lost during the flood in 2009. Returning these areas back to green space would encourage water to follow its natural hydrology, reducing the burden on stormwater management resources and communities. If you look at the map that show where the flood-prone zone areas were, I mean, they are very close to where we're going to be putting homes. And, you know, not only do we have the intermodal station in Austell, it's not this map, it's another one, but Austell also just built a new, very large industrial site not far from the intermodal facility, which again, just adds more to the impervious surface that's around Sweetwater. I feel like I would be directly responsible for any negative event that could occur knowing that this area is already compromised. But I also know the issues that we have with affordable housing and trying to get people places to live. But if we give people places to live in areas that could be susceptible to flooding, then I just feel like we're going to create more of a challenge. So it pains me to say this because I didn't walk in here with any other intent other than the support, the interest of commissioners. But that map, that the resident, or excuse me, the image that the resident put on the screen just brought all of that back. And that was a very real event in those residents' lives that still impacts people to this day. So I'm afraid to say I can't support this application.
With that, there's a motion and a second. I'll call the question. The motion does not move forward. There's two in opposition, which include myself and Commissioner Gamble. So when Commissioner Gamble returns, she can...
Correct, Chairwoman. She would be able to watch the presentation that was made today. And it'd be one of the first things that we would deal with upon, I guess, in December, which will be our next zoning hearing. And she'd be able to cast her vote at that point in time.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we'll go on to the next case.
Okay, next case is resounding case Z-41 of 2022, Southern Gas Partners LLC. Request rezoning from NS and GC to NRC for a convenient store of fuel sales and a car wash in Landline 339 of the 16th District. Property is located on the southwest corner of the intersection of Shawford Road and Tricam Road. Is the applicant present? The director said the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to resounding case Z-41? Let the director show there's no one opposed. Let the record show there's no one opposed. Would the applicant please come forward?
Madam Chairman, members of the board, my name is Jim Corson. I'm here to represent, along with both, is here, are here to represent the owner of the property. We have been here twice before. The cases were continued to give us time to work with the neighbors, which we've done. We've had two neighborhood meetings, both chaired by Commissioner Burrow. And we've had numerous phone calls and emails back and forth with representatives that represent the homeowners. As of last night, we thought that we had resolved all of the issues with the neighbors except for one. That was an issue that the the neighbors wanted DOT to install a one-foot raised curb between the northbound and southbound lanes of Tricam Road, uh, be be to to mitigate what they consider unsafe and perhaps illegal traffic maneuvers into and out of the Dunkin' Donuts on the opposite side of the street from us. After the last homeowner meeting, Amy Diaz asked me for a CAD file of our site plan so that DOT could study whether or not it would be feasible to add this median. As of last night, I had an email from Amy, which said that the DOT will add the median, but in order to do so, they need an additional two feet from us. They need us to move our curb and gutter and sidewalk back two feet on our side to give them the additional two feet that they need to be able to add this median. Our owner did consent to giving up this additional two feet. I emailed Amy back last night and went on record by email stating our agreement to do that. The stipulation letter and the latest site plan that we have officially presented to the board and to the county are dated November the 8th. The letter includes all stipulations and agreements that we've made with the county and with the homeowners to that date, and the site plan reflects all of these changes. So the agreement that we made last night with with the DOT to give up the additional two feet are not included with the letter of stipulation or is not shown on the site plan. But I'm here today to not only confirm my email to Amy last night, but to openly agree in this meeting that we will give up the additional two feet to allow DOT to construct that median. When we came here this morning, we were thinking that we had opposition, and we understand the opposition was only because they didn't know at that time that they would be getting this median they've been asking for, because they're concerned about traffic accidents that have been occurring supposedly because of these improper entrance and exits from the Dunkin' Donuts across the street. But in discussion with the some of the homeowners that are here this morning in attendance, we were happy to learn that they are now in agreement and do not oppose our rezoning because they are now getting this raised, this island that would prevent the improper entrances and exits to and from the Dunkin' Donuts across the street.
Vote, Patel. One of the things I just want to do is say thank you to the homeowners and to the commissioners as well for allowing us to get together and talk about what the current issues were and what we could do to help. And in this exercise, we have figured out a way to both work with the homeowners as well as help hopefully alleviate the safety issues that we do have on that particular intersection. We're very grateful for the opportunity that we did have to have these meetings with them. So for that, we thank you guys, and we especially thank the homeowners to work with us.
Thank you. With that, we'll hear from anyone who's here in opposition. Okay. Seeing none, I believe I'll turn this over to you, Commissioner Gamble.
Thank you. Amy Diaz, can I ask you to come up, please?
Amy Diaz, DOT.
Thanks, Amy. Can you please tell us about this agreement with the median on Tricam and then the two-foot easement?
Um, so what happened is they gave us the CAD files, as you mentioned. We had a designer look at it and see if the a one-foot raised median could fit. It's a it's a narrow median that we have employed in a couple of places in the county. There was about two feet that we needed to be able to do that. We looked at narrowing the lanes, but traffic operations was not comfortable with that. They want to maintain the 11-foot lanes. So they, we were still looking for this two feet. I reached out to the developer, and they said that they would donate that. However, I do want to say that there is no funding associated with this improvement. It was my understanding that this was an improvement being requested as part of this development, that they put it in as they do their construction for their corner.
And was funding discussed with the applicant?
No, well, it was at the the community meeting, that we it would be something that we would ask of the applicant, but in the emails, we were merely discussing whether or not it could even physically be put in.
Do we have an estimate of what the installation would be?
I do not. I can can reach out and get that, but I don't have it ready.
Okay, thank you. Can I have the applicant back up? Would you be willing to share, if not the full or partial, of the installation of this median with the county?
We were not aware that this would be something that we would be asked to pay for. As far as we are concerned, it benefits the Dunkin' Donuts, or it impacts the Dunkin' Donuts across the street and really doesn't have any bearing on our property. The DOT has given us a right-in, right-out, and a left-in maneuver into our site from the northbound Tricam Road travel lanes. In that respect, this median has absolutely no impact, either positively or negatively, as far as our development is concerned. It's something that the neighbors asked DOT to put in because they, as a surrounding community, are concerned with the traffic accidents and traffic congestion that is being caused by the illegal and improper use of the Dunkin' Donuts exit across the street. It has absolutely no bearing plus or minus on us in any way.
But you are still willing to give the additional two feet right-of-way easement?
Yes, we will definitely give the additional two feet.
Great, thank you.
Just to, may I tag on to that, just for a quick sec? One of the things that maybe we could do is maybe ask the Dunkin' Donuts to put in the funding for the median, because it is more of their safety issue, not necessarily ours.
I'm sorry. I think the likelihood of pulling in another one to fund facilitation of people supporting your zoning application is probably nil, but maybe it's worth while having a conversation about what could be done as as a as a stronger solution or as a solution, but money is required. And and we have had applicants in the past make improvements and fund improvements outside of their zone at issue, excuse me, at their, yeah, zoning at issue, because they wanted support for their application, so that's not unheard of.
Okay, so with that, I'm going to make my motion. I'm going to make a motion to approve Z 41 of 2022 with the following conditions. Letter of stipulations dated November 8th of 2022 with the addition, additional language that an additional two-foot easement to be given to Cobb DOT for the future construction of a one-foot median on Tricam. The district commissioner to approve the final site plan. Fire department comments and recommendations, Stormwater Management Division comments and recommendations, Water and Sewer comments and recommendations, DOT comments and recommendations, and the variances as identified in the zoning division comments regarding parking. Is that still applicable, John? As I'm, I'm sorry?
Uh, no, the the parking for the vacuum pumps of the car wash has been fixed, so there are no variances needed now.
Okay, I'm sorry. So strike the variance. I think that covers it all, yes? Did I cover them all? I know.
So so you got his new letter, new site plan?
Yep, his his new letter, his site, his stipulation letter dated November 8th. And then I'll start, I'll staff comments and recommendations not otherwise in conflict.
And we did add the the two extra feet of right-of-way.
And the two extra feet of right-of-way I added.
I think we got it right.
Okay. That is my motion.
Second. This is this opportunity for discussion, Commissioner Gamble. I did see the applicant wanted to weigh in. I don't know if there's clarification needed on stipulation.
Can you please come to the podium?
In discussions with the opposition, we will agree to participate with the county on some basis to try to fund this median.
So I'd like to amend the stipulation that the applicant will work with the county in the construction of the median.
Second. Do I second that? She can just add. She voted on it. Okay. All right. Is there any additional discussion? Call the question. The motion passes 4-0.
Okay, next case is resoning case Z 68 of 2022. Revive Land Group LLC requests rezoning from GC to FST for a townhome community in Land Lot 45 of the 18th District. Property is located on the south side of Veterans Memorial Highway, West Allen Road. The applicant is present. Earlier, there was one person opposed. All those who wish to address the board, please come forward. We've sworn in.
I'm Kevin Moore here on behalf of and pleased to represent the Revive Land Group in this application for rezoning. This property is 8.7 acres. It's located on the south side of Veterans Memorial Highway. We are proposing this property be rezoned from this existing general commercial category, which you can see on the screen now, to the RM8 category for development of a 66-unit, maximum 66-unit townhome community. This particular property, as you can see, is is fully zoned commercial, GC. You can see the rezonings or the zonings in the area. There is office services, LRO, there's light industrial, NRC, NS, there's also R 20. So if you can come up with a category, it's probably within a short distance of this property. As you can see, there's quite a mixed bag of zoning categories. This property is actually located in a neighborhood activity center. But what has been happening along Veterans Memorial Highway and also along Mableton Parkway in this particular general area, what we have seen is the beginning of somewhat of a renaissance in terms of new residential development that is of a higher quality than we've seen before, that is really transforming and will transform the area going forward. This area has had, what I call it, legacy development, that is, going back years and years prior to even our zoning code, when Veterans Memorial was Bankhead Highway, going way back. And it was developed out in a strip fashion, that is, both sides of the road were developed as older, then it was newer, but it was commercial buildings, individual commercial buildings and industrial type uses and buildings that that were developed mostly in the 50s and 60s and 70s as zoning was coming into focus. But since that legacy time, those have not, you know, gone on to be refurbished, only in, they're renovated only in spots. What's been missing, though, is to really bring in newer residential along Veterans Memorial, along Mableton Parkway, and now we're starting to see that. There's been some efforts that have been made by planning, by this Board of Commissioners over the last many years to begin to see that, and it's starting to come to fruition. What does that do? That the newer residential likes being proposed by Revive Land Group, as it comes on board, what happens is the people demand, the new homeowners demand there to be a higher level of commercial services. They demand there to be a higher level of services in their neighborhood and demand that properties be brought up to code and that properties be, you know, improved in their area. And that's what we are starting to see. This is an example of that, and a high example of that. This particular proposal takes property that is really slated for commercial, but it wouldn't be the type of commercial that's needed here. What's needed here in this particular area is is the new quality residential to come first, and that's what we're proposing here today. Turning to the site plan itself, which is over here, we are proposing, again, what is a maximum 66-home townhome community. Again, this will be restricted by stipulation to no more than 10% rental, which I think is a big component and something that has been established within this overall community area. One of the important components, I think, in stories of this application has been the work of Revive Land Group. We have worked extremely hard over many months, even before it was filed for rezoning. Revive Land Group has worked very closely with the Mableton Improvement Coalition and its zoning committee members and has gone through, you know, several iterations of the plan to really work at achieving a consensus. It's why ultimately, Mableton Improvement Coalition, you know, communicated that they were in support of this plan and with the stipulations. In fact, recommended it go on the consent agenda because of that. In fact, if you happen to watch the planning commission meeting from last month, they did stand up and had a few concerns, and since those two weeks, we were able to resolve those concerns even further to so they could have their full support. Turning to the site plan, I'll show you some of those key components. And just to orient you, you have Veterans Memorial here, and then the property. And just to orient you, you have Veterans Memorial here, uh, and then the property that lies to the south is 8.7 acres. Um, what we were able to do, uh, as part of, um, just working very diligently to address, uh, a lot of, uh, issues as it relates to, well, how does this look along Veterans Memorial? If you want to change Veterans Memorial, then what you have to do is change or upgrade. How is it going to look and how is it gonna present to Veterans Memorial? And then one way doing that is, so these units, um, and townhomes that are located here are rear-loaded units, so they will face out to Veterans Memorial, uh, and therefore, uh, present, uh, a high-quality appearance. And I'll get to also, uh, the additional impact and commitments that we're making in terms of the streetscape, uh, frontage. Uh, one of the other important components that was, was done here is, if you come down to the south side of this property, uh, before, uh, there was a, the site plan had a cul-de-sac here, uh, and then, uh, continued on with the development. Uh, one of the concerns, uh, was from Mr. and Mrs. DeLuca, who live right here on the south side of this property. Uh, they spoke in opposition at the planning commission meeting, not so much to the development, but to this particular area. Uh, just simply wanting more distance between the proposed development and their home. They have a beautiful home there. Uh, Revive and its, uh, engineer, uh, were able to go back and come up with this design, which has been reviewed by Cobb DOT, and they're providing some relief for this design because it's, it meets, um, you know, with their satisfaction. And what we were able to do is vastly increase the distance, uh, between the property line and the homes, uh, make sure we have an established tree buffer there. Uh, ultimately, Mr. and Mrs. DeLuca communicated their support for this plan and very much appreciated the efforts that occurred here. Uh, in addition, we have a full landscape 25-foot buffer along our western boundary, uh, as well. And I think, uh, with those types of, uh, elements that are present here, uh, we have been able to achieve that level of support, uh, from Mr. DeLuca, who has been very vocal, who's had meetings on his property, uh, as well as with, uh, Mableton Improvement Coalition overall. Next, what he's going to put on the screen, uh, and while the, the townhomes that you see in, to see in the background, those are just for massing purposes, so you can tell, that's not the actual elevations there. We have specific elevations for those. But what I want you to see, what the focus or the point of this, uh, rendering, uh, is the frontage. And that is what, what they are proposing to do along Veterans Memorial in terms of, uh, the wrought iron type fencing with the brick pillars, uh, down the entire stretch, uh, the heavy landscaping, a lot went into that design. We went through several, again, iterations of that, working with Mableton Improvement Coalition to come up with the look, how, you know, how is this going to present? Uh, again, you'll, you'll have townhomes. Uh, behind that will be front-facing, so that will be the fronts of those townhomes. Uh, that will be primarily have brick and stone fronts, so, uh, understand that that's just a massing. It's not what the actual townhomes will look like. There's another illustration as well, uh, just so you can start to see how, uh, this will, the view shed will be along Veterans Memorial, and then, uh, you can really understand, uh, the kind of the vision here for how that creates a look, uh, and really starts to, uh, transform that cata, uh, that corridor. Uh, the, uh, this application, we believe, is one that was on your consent agenda, and it was on there for a reason, it was on there because of all the work that had gone into this to this point. Uh, there are, uh, a full stipulation letter, it was last updated even as of yesterday, with just a few i, items that were added to it. Uh, and, uh, it has been a full effort with full stipulations. Uh, I don't want to review each and every one of those with you, but rest assured, uh, what we have been able to do is establish, establish landscape review committees, establish architectural review committees. We have details such as color palettes for the, for the homes themselves, uh, that are included as part of the stipulations. Uh, we have very detailed stipulations, uh, about the homeowners association and what it will do, as well as these buffers that I've described. All of that's contained within this stipulation letter, uh, and what you would expect and really demand to see from the quality that's being proposed here by Revive Land Group. Uh, we understand that, uh, there's a, a couple of questions that may come up from this opposition, though I truly believe they're not in opposition to the development, but more have a question or two that they potentially won't answer. Uh, I'll let them speak, but that's my understanding, uh, we not had spoken with them previously. Uh, but with that, we believe we've covered every single basis and base that we have been asked to, every request that's been made, Revive has responded, responded appropriately and addressed each and every concern that's been, uh, that's been brought up and has answered each and every question that has been raised. Uh, we believe this is an excellent rezoning and an excellent project. It's one that's been recommended by staff, as well as your planning commission for approval, and we respectfully request your approval of this rezoning, thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. We'll now hear from opposition, you'll have a maximum of 10 minutes to address the board. And seeing that there are multiple speakers, just be mindful of your time so that other speakers have opportunity to, to speak as well.
Good morning, dear Commissioners and staff. Uh, my name is Bessa, this is my husband, Edir, so it's actually one opposition. We are really not in opposition, we actually love that there is so much development happening on that, uh, road. Uh, but we did not get the notification for the second meeting, whenever it was postponed. That's why we have not heard, nobody has heard from us before. So, we were at DeLuca's this weekend and had coffee with them, and they told us about this meeting. So, we're like, woo, we need to go, and, and, uh, we actually have two concerns. So, we are... So, we own 188 and 178 right here on this side. And, um, it's a small house we have in the property right now, and, uh, it's not connected to the sewer. So, um, when we heard, the, the public sewer is on septic tank. So, when we heard about this development, we went and spoke with, uh, people at the sewer connection, I guess. And they told us that we cannot connect with the sewer on the street because the house is in a lower level. The only place we can connect with the sewer would be somewhere around here. So, after all these houses are being built, then our property will not be able to connect to the sewer. So, we are asking maybe for a sewer easement or a sewer connection, or...
Thank you.
And that's it, we love that this is happening in, in the area.
Thank you, you have eight more minutes, you... We can respond, uh, but we prefer to make sure you have the time allocated to you if desired. Okay, thank you. Are there any other speakers? Okay, ma'am, if you could stay right, excuse me, for our speakers, please stay right there, thank you. I'm gonna turn things over to the Commissioner.
If you would. I just wanted to ask, thank you so much for joining us today. I wanted to ask you regarding the notification, you communicated that you did not receive notice for today. Have you received notices in the past?
We received the first one, we did not receive the second one.
Okay, okay.
So, whenever it was postponed, we just didn't receive any notification for the, the, the second. So, we only heard about, heard about this meeting this weekend, when we went to DeLuca's and had a coffee with them, and they told us about this meeting today.
Okay.
And John, for clarification, um, notices are sent for the initial meeting, and it's just updated on the signs?
That, that is correct, the, the notification layers only go off of the first hearing, and then the, the dates are adjusted on the sign to the next date.
I'm not sure we didn't, why we didn't receive it, but we didn't.
No, the explanation is, letters are mailed for the initial meeting, and if there are any changes, then those dates are updated on the actual zoning signs. That would explain why you did not receive, I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Well, you see, I don't come often in those meetings.
But you're here now, so that's perfect, that's perfect, thank you, thank you. Did you guys have any questions for her before she said? No, okay. Um, Carl, I just want to address her concern regarding the, um, the soup to Tim, I'm sorry.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, Tim Davidson, Cock County Water.
Hi, Tim, if you would just address, because this is the first that I'm learning of this issue or this concern. You too? Regarding her, um, not being able to connect to the sewer?
I'm, I'm not sure if I can address it, I, I don't have enough information, uh, I'm not, I don't believe it was me that she spoke to at the sewer system, I don't recall that conversation.
Okay.
So, I'm, I'm not sure what I can really say from here. Wait, is there a way you can bring up GIS map? And turn on sewer layer?
I was gonna say, that's probably, we probably could have asked best.
Pardon?
We probably could have asked best where she, where she received information that she would no longer be able to.
Yeah, I'm gonna call her up, but I just wanted to.
And which, which property are we speaking of?
If, if you would come up, sir, just, just come up.
Thank you.
Okay, so... Could you zoom, zoom in a minute? So... Right, so you can see in the, the public, existing public sewer lines in green, your lots are, where it says R20. So, right now, as residential lots, sewer is defined as not available because there's not sewer adjacent to the lots or in, in the right of way or in an easement, uh, contacting the lots. So, if, if they want to get to sewer, there's obviously, there will be sewer within this development that hasn't been designed yet, that the, the county hasn't seen. That'll be presented to us at plan review.
The public sewer line is all the way down, if you go down.
Can you step to the mic, sir?
What, 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 all we can offer is, it's a development standard that when a property comes in for, for development, that they extend sewer to the next upstream property. I don't know if his property would be considered the next upstream property. Again, I don't have enough information or sewer design to look at right now, because the developer's engineer does that and presents it at plan review. So, I was understanding that they're asking for an easement from, be from the developer to get to their sewer. I don't even know if that would work, as far as elevations and the depth of the designed sewer and so forth. Uh, or maybe they're implying that the sewer is all the way to where the existing sewer is, which is, is, appears to be downhill. That's, that's, I guess that's up, it's up to the board to, it's kind of a cart before the horse thing. Sewer hasn't been designed, I don't know if that would work, the way they lay their lots out and their houses and setbacks and, uh, the grades. So, I, I don't know how to address that at this stage.
This is definitely a first for me, I have not dealt with this before, I'm not sure.
I think I'm rambling a little bit because I just don't know how to address.
Sure, no, I appreciate, I appreciate the comments that you, you have shared.
I mean, it makes me wonder if the applicant will at least be amenable to working with the neighbor.
Oh, absolutely.
To, to tag on to that comment, Tim, could, could the applicant give an easement to this property owner um, on that, on that border to tie into where they're gonna be bringing sewer for the homes?
We, we wouldn't be opposed to that.
Right, yeah, no, I'm gonna call Kevin up, but I wanted the Commissioner to ask a question.
Yeah, so see if they would be amenable to a easement, and then depending on the topography change, um, if they would be willing to potentially have to lower the sewer in order to get the connectivity to have the flow.
Can I, can I show yours, um, on the map something?
Sure.
All right, the sewer line is, uh, all this land used to be owned by o, one family. Uh, the two our lots, yes, including two our lots. The sewer line u, used to be right here, and it is right here, the public sewer line is right here. I mean, it's a slob, it can be easily connected, you know, extended to our property right here. And we have the house right here, the house is on septic tank.
Okay.
It's not, it's not difficult to do the connection right here.
May the applicant please, please approach, Kevin, can you approach?
I was just trying to wait for them to...
Can I offer something?
No, no, thank you very much, I appreciate, oh, oh, go ahead, did you want to add something?
Yeah, I, I didn't see it on the, on the GIS map, there is sewer along the property frontage in Veterans Memorial Highway.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
There is prop, there is sewer in Vet Memorial Highway along the property frontage.
Okay.
Now, that may be too high to serve, or the existing house on each prop, on each lot.
It's like 85.
Okay, so, are you planning on subdividing the property?
No.
Or just want to connect your house? So, there, the code does allow them to pump up to the edge of their property and gravity flow into the existing sewer line. So, that may be possible to be served in, by the sewer in Veterans Memorial Highway.
Okay.
They would, it would be, it would be a private pump to serve that existing house, pump up to the edge of your property, and gravity flow into a tap. So, that's allowed by code.
And would that be on the homeowner to...
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
There's a program, I know, uh, there's a program with stormwater that allows people to convert from, um, a septic tank to sewer at a prorated cost over time, and I, I know I've worked with residents to do that.
We, we do offer that, the, the system development fee, the 2, it's $2,900. They are allowed to pay that over time when they connect.
Yeah, it, it was at a, quite a reasonable cost and, um, to the homeowner.
For the, for the homeowners, is that something that you would consider?
I mean, for the future, we don't know what, what are we going to do with this, you know? For the future, we may sub, sub, subdivide, subdivide it, this, this lot. There are two lots together, three acres.
Okay.
For the future, it would be better there, because, yeah, two, three acres, in our part, there is a, one acre, one acre and a half on the other side. There, there almost four by, 4.5 acres. Why not, not, why not, even for the county, it will be better, not, we're not having a connection down there for the public sewer.
Pardon?
For the county, it would be good too, to have a public sewer connection at the end of the lots there. If somebody wants to buy it or, you know, subdivide it and build houses there, townhouses, it will be easier for, for the developer.
Okay. Okay. Kevin, if you would, please.
Thank you.
Mr. I feel like I'm doing this on the fly, I'm looking at contours that Carl provided to me. If you just look at the natural flow of these two lots, I don't believe it goes through this potential subdivision. I think it goes further south through, I think the address is 194, um, I'm not sure what street that would be. So, I don't, I don't think these, the, the two properties in question naturally flow through Kevin's development.
Okay.
They flow, they, they flow more southward.
Okay.
Apparently, again, I'm doing this on the fly.
So, no, and I appreciate that, so based on what we're seeing here, their property is to the west of this, of, of the subject parcel. So, you're saying that it's straight, it, it goes directly down, it does not cross towards the back or towards the south of the development as the homeowner indicated?
Contour show that it really wants to flow more southward, that, yeah, where the hand is going.
Okay.
No, I'm not saying it wouldn't work through this development, but just if you drop a bowling ball on the ground, it looks like it's gonna flow more south and not through, not, not to the east.
Okay. All right. I'm not sure what to do with this one, Kevin, please.
I mean, the, the point of the question was not to attach their house to sewer, that they, it's a sewer connection for future development of the property, as, as he ultimately told you. Not, not for the house, it's to attach sewer so it could be developed in the future. So, and which is fine, we want, we always encourage, that's a standard, and I, you know, from our standpoint, we just want to stick with the Cobb water and sewer standards. We're happy to do that, we've planned for that. We will, we extend sewer up to the next up, upland property, and we connect sewer and gravity flow through our site. If that upland property can connect, is able to connect to that, that's great, that's how the system is designed. But as, as Mr. Davidson explained, unless the property flows that way, you know, unless downhill is that way, then it, that doesn't work, there's another way that that property can go, and that's what, and that's how they should go and deal with their development issues. And not, it, it's not our job, and it's not the county's job today, from our perspective, to solve
Their future.
A future sewer for a future development, and no, none of us know what it's gonna look like or what it is. That's not, from our perspective, the job today.
Okay.
We'll meet the development standards and happy to meet the development standards.
Okay. Okay.
And they're, and they'll have options when they want to develop their property. If they want to put, connect their house to sewers, Mr. Davidson said, they can do that, there's a program to do that.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Do you guys have anything for Kevin?
Um, I, I just want the applicant, I, I'm sorry, the opposition. to come up, I just want to state a couple of things. Opposition? Hello? Okay, then. So, all right, they're saying, so if you guys would come up, I just would like to just have a couple of statements. You don't need to say anything, I just don't want to yell across the room. I just want to make sure that you guys are clear on the explanation that was given by, by county staff and also by the applicant. But it sounds like your property is currently on septic, but you're thinking fast forward in the future development of your property, is that correct?
I mean, what's the point of the zoning
Development?
Development if you are not so, not looking into the future?
Right, but you're looking in.
We are looking for both, connecting now and also into the future.
Right, but primarily, you're also concerned about the future of your particular development?
Yes.
Right, and being able to access sewer for your future development?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I understand that, and I appreciate that, but what's before us today for consideration is not for the future development of your property. Instead, it's the subject property that's here before us today. But I just want to make sure that you guys were clear on that.
Yeah, well, we'll look into the, what county has to connect right now.
Okay. Okay, all right, yeah, go ahead.
And the other thing to note was that for the future development that you're looking at, it seemed like the flows were not through this property as well. It went through more south as opposed to east. So hoping that can also be resolved as part of that conversation.
The way it was explained to us is our land goes from Veterans Memorial down, downhill.
Correct.
And the flow is on the back of the property.
And the sewer line is right there, again. It's right on the end. Right there, right there, yeah.
So in the future, it's going to cost us a lot of time and money to connect there. There is a daycare being built, and they have huge pumps that they're going to connect.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, I'm gonna have to interject here, I'm sorry. We appreciate your concern. However, at issue today is the parcel adjacent to your property, not your property, and we're spending a significant amount of time speaking about something which is not a part of today's zoning. Because I would ask for you to please connect with our stormwater staff. They'd be happy to give you their contact information so we can have additional discussion offline. But I think we need to get back to the zoning case that we have before us today.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay, with that, I am prepared to make a motion. I would like to, I make a motion to approve Z68 with the following stipulations. Approve the zoning request from GC to the RM8 zoning category. Include the letter of agreeable stipulations from J. Kevin Moore dated November 14th, 2022. Hours of construction shall be Monday through Friday from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. And on Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and no construction on Sundays. And staff comments and recommendations not otherwise in conflict. That concludes my motion.
Second.
Is there any additional discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 4-0, thank you. We'll take a seven-minute break until 11:20.
Welcome back to our zoning hearing. We are now at our other business cases.
Thank you. First case we're going to hear today for other business is other business item number 59, which is to consider a reduction of required minimum lot size for livestock, which are two pot-bellied pigs, from two acres to .46 acres for Justin Bruce and Jennifer Kavicka. This property is located on the east side of Plains Way, north of Sandy Drive, and landlot 456 of the 16th District. By way of background, the Board of Commissioners considers all reductions to minimum lot size pursuant to a code amendment to Section 134-271.7A adopted February 27, 2018. The subject property is zoned R20 and has 20,000 square feet in it. The request is to reduce the lot size from two acres to .46 acres for livestock, which are two pot-bellied pigs with piglets. The animals would be kept in a fenced area, which is 24 by 24 in the backyard. The enclosure would be approximately 16 feet off the southern property line and approximately 53 feet off the northern property line. The applicants stated the pen can be moved if needed, and this application is a result of a code enforcement complaint due to the smell of the animals. Is the applicant present? Let's direct show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to other business number 59?
Three.
Three? Let's direct show there's three people opposed. All those who wish to address the board, please come forward. We sworn in.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. I hope you all are doing all right. My name is Jennifer Kavicka. I am the owner of 3270 Plains Way. I have been in the Army Guard for the last 12 years, where I served overseas during Operation Enduring Freedom. Currently, I'm a Staff Sergeant, and I serve on the Counter Drug Task Force, where I support federal law enforcement as we dismantle and disrupt drug trafficking organizations within our community. I would like to introduce my partner, Justin Bruce.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Justin Bruce. I was an engineer with AT&amp;T for eight years, where I worked on many Cobb beautification projects, and now I focus my time renovating and restoring older homes to help bring life back into the community. And the reason we point these out is to show that we do care about the community and being upstanding citizens within it. But the reason we're here today is because of a lot size reduction for livestock due to violating ordinance 134-197, Section 3, of having livestock on less than two acres. However, it is not within our wishes to be zoned for livestock, and that is because we have two pot-bellied mini pigs. Their names are Petunia and Beetlejuice, and they are our pets, and the fact of them being pets will become evident in these slides. So the screenshot on top is of the Cobb County ordinance for the definition of livestock, 134-197-2D, which states that they are animals that are or may be raised for the purpose of providing food or transportation or being resold or bred. Petunia and Beetlejuice and pot bellies in general do not fit that criteria. And the bottom screenshot came from a Cobb County open records request, where I asked, when was the last time this ordinance was updated? And as you can see at the bottom, it was last updated in 1977. Just for some quick definitions, livestock is an animal used on a farm for some productive purpose or food source. Hogs are pigs that are over 120 pounds, and pot-bellied pigs are a breed of mini pig brought over to the U.S. in the 1980s. In the code violation, it was stated that we had hogs on our property, and our pet mini pigs do not meet that criterion. And I also want to reemphasize that the last update to the ordinance predates the introduction of pot bellies to the U.S., just making it outdated. And here you can see the Georgia Department of Agriculture classifies pot bellies as companion animals, along with other typical household pets, and the U.S. Department of Agriculture also considers them to be pets. And as seen on this letter from the USDA, a pot-bellied pig is considered livestock only when they are in import or export status, and Petunia and BJ don't have passports, so they don't qualify for that. But for nearby ordinances, the city of Acworth, which of course is in Cobb County, allows mini pigs that do not exceed 22 inches in height or 125 pounds in weight, and this ordinance was last updated in 2013 to include pot bellies. The city of Atlanta also allows them, with the latest update being in 2002. And Cherokee County states that the term livestock does not include Vietnamese pot-bellied pigs, and they are allowed in all residential districts. Their definition of livestock was updated to exclude pot bellies in 1998 per a Cherokee County open records request. And I wanted to address some areas of concern. The first one being that property values will decline. However, I did reach out to the Cobb County Tax Assessor and ask if pets or animals have anything to do with property appraisals, and their response shows that they do not at all affect the value of real property. Also, I had my former residents appraised in 2021 and '22 while both pigs were present, and both were appraised at fair market value with no mention of any animal at all in the appraisal reports.
There is another concern that we were breeding them or eating them. One neighbor stated that the concern was about the size of our operation. There is no operation. We have no intentions of breeding them, and we could not breed them for profit even if we wanted to, as Beetlejuice does have a genetic mutation called cryptorchidism. This disqualifies him from breeding because it can cause infertility and sterility. There was an accident where there were three piglets at one time. They are now gone. They were given as gifts to a family friend with land. I say it was an accident because there was an appointment scheduled for Beetlejuice to be neutered, and she did get pregnant in that time. We have taken the steps to get Petunia spayed. Another concern is that they are noisy. Pigs do make a variety of sounds, mostly grunts of contentment. The stereotypical squeal only occurs when they are in immediate danger or distress. We do have Wi-Fi cameras that are recorded to SD cards, and we use that to monitor them. We have that SD card with us today, and we are happy to submit that as proof of noise. Noises throughout the day that are louder than both of the mini pigs includes dogs barking, kids playing at the local recess, traffic on Sandy Plains Road, and emergency vehicle sirens. The concern was that it was smelly. They were smelling. Pigs do not sweat or emit a foul odor. A common phrase, "smells like a pigpen," is associated with the unsanitary and overcrowded conditions of a pig farm. We clean up their pen throughout the week to prevent waste buildup and have included pictures so you can see what that pen looks like at any given time. Another concern could be that they are aggressive. A trained mini pig will not be aggressive. They do operate under a hierarchy within their herd, but we have trained them using common practices. Pot bellies bond with their families and are extremely affectionate, as you can see. We submitted open records requests to Cobb and all bordering county animal controls to get the statistics of aggressive pigs versus other animals. It is important to note that there were no instances of aggressive pigs. Paulding County does have a one with an asterisk beside it. That is a funny story that we hope you will ask us about. A concern could be that they will make you sick. According to the CDC, there have only been three cases of swine flu passed to humans in 2022. All three cases occurred at the same West Virginia Agriculture Fair. Per the USDA, another virus known as the African swine fever that is only passed between pigs, and there have been zero reports in the United States. Beetlejuice and Petunia are both up to date on their yearly vaccines and have received clean bills of health. A concern could be that they're just dumb farm animals. Pigs are in the top five most intelligent species on Earth. They possess the cognitive ability of a four-year-old child. They are emotionally intelligent and express complex emotions. They have problem-solving skills and a sense of time. As you can see, they have learned how to sit for treats. Overall, pot-bellied pigs are pets. They bond with their humans. They express emotions such as grief and depression when rehomed. They make great indoor pets because of their ability to be body-trained, leash-trained, and they are hypoallergenic. They do need time outdoors to root around and sunbathe. They are used as therapy animals and companions in hospitals, and most importantly, they are emotional support animals per my licensed therapist that treats me for military service-related anxiety.
And for some size comparisons, the max weight of a pot-bellied pig is 150 pounds, whereas livestock pigs can reach 1,000 pounds plus. Both of ours are fully grown, and they both weigh around 80 pounds. On the left, you can see that the pot bellies are the smallest breed of pig compared to other breeds, and on the right, you can see pot bellies next to human and livestock pigs. Here are quite a few pictures of pot bellies next to various breeds of dogs, and as you can see, they're the size of your average medium-sized dog. This chart here shows the USDA data of livestock pigs sold at auction. The average live weight is around 280 pounds, which is three and a half times bigger than Petunia and BJ. And to compare their food, mini pig food is specifically formulated with nutrients that pot bellies need, and livestock feed is formulated for growth. Per the FDA Animal Food Regulations, all packages must be labeled appropriately, meaning you can't just feed them any type of pig food. And for tax considerations, per the Georgia Department of Agriculture, livestock feed is tax-exempt and pet food is not, and as stated earlier, the GDA classifies them as pets. We have reached out to multiple actual livestock farmers to get their professional opinions on pot bellies, and the consensus was that they are, quote, "useless as livestock and would never be profitable." The full responses were in the packets that we have sent in. We reached out to four of them. We also reached out to a mini pig rescue, and a summary of their response was basically that all registered mini pig rescues in Georgia are full and all animal shelters are full, which would mean most likely euthanization for any abandoned pigs. Here's a letter from our veterinarian stating that they are pets and not livestock. And we have also reached out to the opposing neighbor who filed the complaint, but we were ignored and never got a response. But we did go ahead and make multiple accommodations anyway that we would love to discuss. Here are some photos of the pen from the neighbor's perspective, along with a zoomed-in view on the right for clarity. And here are pictures, one from the road, seeing you can't see the pen, and just pictures, other views of the pen itself, along with their little shelter that we built them.
In conclusion, our pot-bellied pigs are pets, and they are treated as such with routine vet visits. They do not fit into the definition of livestock per any reputable source. Petunia and Beetlejuice are emotional support animals per a licensed therapist treating military service-related anxiety. Surrounding areas state they are pets. We have received the support of surrounding neighbors. This includes neighbors that were formerly opposed due to misinformation, but once shown photos of the property and were properly informed, they did decide to change their mind in support. We have an online petition that has well over 1,300 signatures as of this morning. We have come up with a list of possible solutions and suggestions for the future that we would love to discuss. We have references and resources for all of the research that we've done. This situation has posed some significant security concerns and grievances for my family. We appreciate you listening to our case and giving us this opportunity. We are humbly asking you to keep our pets at home. Pending any questions, this concludes our presentation.
Thank you. With that, we'll hear from opposition.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Joan Comer, and I've lived at Plains Estates subdivision here in Marietta for 30 years. Some of my neighbors have been here 40 and 50 years. Jennifer Kavicka and Justin Bruce, the OB-59 applicants for this meeting, just moved in next door to me less than six months ago. We are here today because my neighbors Justin and Jennifer violated a Cobb County ordinance, subsection 2D of Code Section 134 and 197. They were issued a citation by Cobb County Code Enforcement for building an unpermitted pigpen and raising piglets on a small, less-than-half-acre lot in our subdivision. The current code says you must live on two acres or more to have livestock. Pot-bellied pigs and any other type of pig are still considered livestock in the current code. After Jennifer and Justin were cited, they were told they had 10 days to resolve the situation. Instead of resolving the situation, they applied for variance to the current code. And as you can see, that is prior to the citation that they were given, and you can see that they had multiple pigs out there, and they weren't small. The pigpen they built backs up to the Cobb County Mountain View Elementary School. Some of my neighbors expressed their concerns, not only about the pigs, but about the future possibility of pig excrement runoff leaching into the ground where children play on the school property. These aren't small pigs. They're quite large. Vietnamese pot-bellied pigs can grow to 200 pounds. Prior to the code violation, Jennifer and Justin added approximately four hog-sized pigs and multiple piglets in the pigpen next door to my home. Because the current code says you must have two acres or more of land to have livestock, they have submitted application, OB-59, asking the Board of Commissioners today for a special exception to have their pigs and piglets in our neighborhood on their less-than-one-half-acre lot. They are referring to them as pets, but they are very large. We have 71 total homes in our Plains Estates subdivision and three vacant lots. I verified this with Christopher Poplasky, one of the appraisers in the residential division at the Cobb County Assessor's Office. In October, I walked door-to-door in my Plains Estates subdivision, obtaining a majority of 55 signatures out of 71 homes with a petition saying no to any types of pigs in our neighborhood. I have the original signatures with me here today and have provided copies of them earlier to you as well. Jennifer and Justin have sent out an online petition in favor of having their pigs in the backyard and have obtained signatures from all over the country and Canada. These signatures are meaningless, as most of the signers do not even live in Cobb County, or more importantly, they do not live in our Plains Estates subdivision. The approval of the requested special exception application, OB-59, today could have a long-term effect on our subdivision, as well as other Cobb County non-HOA subdivision homeowners. It will open the door to others who have similar views, adding more pigs and pigpens to the backyards of our Cobb County non-HOA subdivision neighborhoods. Our neighborhood does not want to see anything bad happen to your pigs, but you were able to provide them with housing prior to your move in the neighborhood, so we are certain you will have plenty of support from your family and the pot-bellied community. Pigs smell, attract rodents and other pests, and will affect property values. I had a brief phone conversation with William Phelan, a lawyer with Sherman &amp; Phelan here in Atlanta around October 13. The very first thing he said was the market value, not the assessed land value of your home, is going to take a nosedive. I also talked with a realtor recently, and she agreed that if you have a choice of buying a home with a pigpen and pigs next door versus a home with a nice yard minus a pigpen and pigs, most people are going to choose the latter. The majority, 55 signatures out of 71 families in our Plains Estates subdivision, say no to pigs and pigpens and no to application OB-59. This isn't fair to me or the majority of the homeowners of my subdivision. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Seems like Commissioner Burrow left this all for you, Commissioner Gamble. Before I go to you, though, why don't we get staff feedback with respect to this, and then we'll have you weigh in.
Madam Chair and Board, the staff would recommend that the board deny the request.
Thank you. Commissioner Gamble.
Thank you, and I'd like to submit to the clerk the original signatures that was handed to me. And with that, I will like to make a motion that we deny OB-59.
Okay. I'll second it for discussion. Are there any comments? All right, call a question. A motion?
I was just reminded by our attorney and John Peterson that I did not put a time while I put a motion to deny. So Bill, do I need to rescind, ask for that vote to be rescinded, or?
Just amended.
Okay. So I'd like to amend my motion for OB-59 of 2022 to deny the request and give the applicant until February 1 of 2023 to have the pigs removed from the property.
I'll second. Any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes 4-0. Thank you.
Okay. Next item to hear is other business item number 60, which is to consider a reduction of minimum lot size from 20,000 square feet to 14,069 square feet for Danny E. Banks, Jr. The property is located on the north side of Carson Lane, West Atlanta Road, in landlot 698 of the 17th District. By way of background, the Board of Commissioners does consider all reductions to minimum lot size pursuant to a code amendment to Section 134-271.7A adopted February 27, 2018. The subject property is zoned R20 and is required to have 20,000 square feet. The request is to reduce the lot size from 20,000 square feet to 14,069 square feet. Staff has researched this property and found that the property had 20,305 square feet in 1953. This was at a time when the roads were smaller in width, and the applicant's property actually platted to the center of Carson Lane, which was a 20-foot easement road. Throughout the years, the property and adjacent properties have been sold, property line disputes arose due to overlapping deeds, deed gaps, or prescriptive ownerships on Carson Lane. Carson Lane is now a 50-foot right-of-way per Cobb County GIS. Also, the city of Smyrna has annexed the property to the east, west, and south of the property, including Carson Lane. That has affected all the lots on Carson Lane. Is the applicant present? Let's direct show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number 60?
No.
Let's direct show there's no one opposed. Would the applicant please come forward? We sworn in.
Sir, please feel free to go ahead.
I'm sorry?
You can go ahead.
So yes, so thank you for having me today.
Please state your name for the record.
Danny E. Banks, Jr.
Thank you, Danny.
So thanks for having me today. Yes, applying for, want to build a personal home of mine. I am a construction home builder, and purchased this lot under these conditions. Based on the size, there are some discrepancies with the surrounding, as was mentioned, with the surrounding property lines and boundary lines, and as a result, it has reduced the building area which I can build upon. So of course, trying to build a personal home of mine, and that's pretty much it, just hoping to be able to start the construction and get past this requirement.
Okay, thank you, sir. Seeing there's no opposition, I'll turn things over to John for feedback, and then we'll have the Commissioner.
Madam Chair and Board, the staff would recommend the board approve the request, subject to the site plan review comments contained in the other business packet and subject to the site plan contained in the other business packet, which is the third and last site plan on the back of your packet. And I'm going to mark this as Exhibit A dated with today's date, so it's clear that we're approving the one on the back page of your other business packet. And that's all. Madam Chair.
Thank you, John. Commissioner?
Sure. And in acknowledgement of all of the discrepancies and conversations that are ensuing about this property and the property lines, I am making a motion to approve OB-60, subject to all staff comments, considerations, and the site plan, Exhibit A, dated October 7, 2022.
All right, I'll second. Is there any discussion? Commissioner?
So the property line disputes have been resolved?
No, and that's what makes this one a little bit more difficult. There are still property line disputes taking place and also inclusive of the city of Marietta.
City of Smyrna.
But we can't.
Yeah. One thing, Commissioner Gamble, I did stipulate this as Exhibit A, which is the third site plan in your packet, and the property line that's in dispute is the east property line, which matches what the neighbor was concerned about. So as long as we approve this one, then we're all good with the property lines.
Okay. Okay, are there any more comments? Call the question. The motion passes 4-0. Thank you, Commissioners. John, is there anything else for today?
Have a great Thanksgiving.
All right, everyone have a wonderful Thanksgiving. Our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.